Okay, you're on and you're being recorded now.
Can you make me a co-host? Second, I hit somebody.
Yeah, as soon as somebody gets logged in. Looks like Matt Bryant is here for this one too. He's joining. I asked you probably the most technical one that participated in it. Well, they are the separate people. There's Pete, I'm gonna admit you. Matt Bryant is in there. All right, yeah.
They're running pretty well.
Make you co-host, Pete. That's what you wanted, right? Pete?
Yes, make me co-host. Second, I hit somebody.
Okay, it should show up for you as co-host. On my side, it's showing you that you're there as co-host. So, you should be able to admit anyone else. Okay? I think you guys all said.
Then can we watch before? Hold on, while we go on, I have, I have to watch. May I, can you plug me in? No, sure. See if I can imagine that. Do you like to go on?
Oh yeah, he's the co-host. See if it works. Meeting is being recorded, gentlemen. Okay. But everything's working, Bill. Gathering myself now.
I take it, so, so, we're going to have a new, 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 down, down, you're fine. Okay, so, need to order it, so, seven forty-eight. Also. File number two. Need, yeah, so. Next part, I'm, I'm, need. Again, we're here. So, I'm not. For. I assume the package will help. So, with the motion, the case of the minutes.
Motion, they will ask about next move.
No, they, 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 they. It's like I'm. And the motion, the, the, the.
Yes.
The office, they, they, I'm, I'm. When you have the patience, but I. You know, a lot of people, and application, I don't have the patience. I think, it's, it's, it's. You can do that, because. You never want to sign. I would finally see a good note and tell you. Once I go. Or, I think they're not, we, 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 that are. The, the, well, what I want to talk about tonight. Mike is supposed to be that news area, but. But then. And I said, I don't know. I had heard that. Another news period, you know, we, we, it's, it's, it's. People are Victoria and some, and. He says, important, important. So. But I wonder. Playing the art. At least, I mean, actually, no. I guess, the, 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 and I, I look at some time, and I say, and then. A news period, the application of the version I showed will be, and there. Don't require it, it falls unregulated. Hardship on the second effort and property. So. So, a, a reason why I'm in turn, from the past, is in question, which is paid by a competent, competent presidential effort, which. The, 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 the. That takes the hardship to be, and is not shared by a percentage of portion of the district or neighborhood. And the news variants is granted, it's a lot older than typical certain neighborhoods. And then it's important to me if there's part people about stuff needed. It sounds like corporate testing and. So. That's clearly definition someone. I've noticed, I've, I've seen some of them. I think.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something while you're looking for that?
Sure.
Um, the reason I was late, and I think it pertains to maybe what you're talking about. Uh, was the person that, uh, we were looking at a news variance for and decided not to do it. Um, so we were explaining to him that he's got to go back. Um, the things that were worried about, uh, in that particular doctoral loan. Um, can be addressed by B D A. No, you'd have to get the doctoral loan and then if there was a, um, uh, adult unemployment effort. Uh, the B D A is not like that. So, uh, and of course they wouldn't get it because they don't have the, the footage and that type of stuff, the setbacks. So, uh, but that's why I'm, uh, I talked to your couple about, uh, on the phone about industrial running. And, uh, it was decided that that wasn't appropriate at this time, uh, that you should go back to, um. The regulars running committee, uh, when we discovered, uh, there would be a fight and also that the. Problem with the zoning committee worried about was actually our variance on the, on the adult unemployment. And that it would come with B D A and on that particular property, they don't have the footage. You have the thousand people waiting in the house, in church. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to let you know that's really explaining this to the applicant is what I was like coming back in. And he, he understands. So, uh, anyway, I'll, I'll get back to you guys. Don't be right, because, uh, because there's only, because there's a problem with even not a force of action. We're hoping there was no guarantee. We were trying to help you gentlemen. Um, you know, you can't guarantee what the government's going to do. And it's just like that. We got five members and you, you never know what Bill's going to do.
Oh, yeah, I don't.
But anyway, uh, but yeah, it does. It clears the way back for him. They understand. And, uh, so, um, anyway, um, I think we've got it all cleared up and hopefully it runs smooth for you. So, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
So, so Mike. I was talking to, to, to the, saying about, you know, and I, I, this was, I did pretty much. You get a new friend because it has no other viable use for that. He can't use for anything else, things he made, things he wants, you know, maybe we won't regret one new friend. But others, if you put on one, one thing, it's not, it's not a good chance to leave them. If you say, you know. Let's take the one we're looking at, AR one, those people by basically, not that everybody knows about it. And, uh, then. I hear it, it could be, it could be, it could be. To make a lot of stuff, you know, it's, it's, you know, as an owner, it's, it's. They can handle also, certainly, if you want. But anyone who's been able to afford industrial equipment, that's, that's. That it would windows to the zone. Now, the neighboring, probably already are on this place, I think, or had first type of operation, but it looks not like it. How the page on, uh, page, maybe. So, like, I want to be, be there. So, so, so Mike, what was on the news variant, like, I mean, you know, the government before, and once you reason why the government. The department for news variants, the district, it's really, 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 uh, yeah, yeah. It's, 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 it's in your own experience, like, you have to accept the role that I brought you. That's pretty much out of, out of the line. So, and you know, you know, what areas, 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 we need to set back, you know, and, and. We, we have enough, and we get you all, especially when you're on the job, but there's definitely much faith forward. But, like, we ran the industrial area. We confirmed that it's not adult, or, or adult entertainment, or anything like that. And that does, that is in the industrial area, sorry, sorry, sorry. Second of all. The conditions for B D A is, is set up, and you want to, that section was fourteen. Is it what, for section, example, fourteen, sixteen, I, I, I don't know. Anyway, but. It is in the, in the, in the, in the, the residence, it means, uh. It would have to be in the middle of a big industrial complex somewhere. Yeah, so, you have a condition used for, for adult entertainment.